October 15th, 2019 meeting of the College School District Board of Directors is called a order. Eric, do you want to lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and
The Secretary, please call the role.
Director Zalinski, here. Director Mendez, here. Director O'Brien, here. Director Simsek, here. Director Apple, here. Director Frank.
He's not able to be here tonight.
Director Hantire, here. Director Russo, here. Director Schreiber.
Here. There's a period of our meeting at the very beginning where we invite all the members of the public to ask any questions about items that are on the agenda. Does anybody in the audience have any questions about agenda items today? If not, there's time at the end of the meeting to ask any question that you'd like. I'll turn to our superintendent before I do that. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 17th, 2019 regular voting meeting and the October 8th, 2019 finance committee meeting.
And voting meeting on that second.
Thank you. Let me rephrase that. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the minutes of the September 17th, 2019 regular voting meeting and the minutes of the October 8th, 2019 finance committee and voting meeting. Have a motion for those two items. Thank you, Kelly.
Second.
Move the second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we talked about personnel, real estate, and contractual matters. Now I will-
I'm sorry. Yes. Why don't you announce that we'll have an executive session afterwards, after this meeting?
We will continue an executive session after this meeting. It's a lot of-
Same topic.
Same topic. Now I'm good?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now I'm going to turn to Dr. DiPiero for the administrative reports.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Schreiber. Just to, very quickly, the board is diligently continuing with the superintendent search. They also heard a report this evening from Dr. Kirk on what we're calling the stakeholder comments about what various groups are looking for in terms of the next superintendent schools and what they're looking for in terms of what they see the district's future and progress. So it's all going very well and moving along. I did ask to our administrators to give us brief updates this evening. Laura Lockman, I would ask you to make a few comments about our update on the ASO time management system, which is new to us this year, so let me get stuff forward and do that.
Absolutely. Thank you. So Dr. DiPiero asked me just to kind of talk about myself and how I was helping us, or at least myself, I know as well as Mrs. Gerson over at Crafton Elementary with like day-to-day operations. Subs are short. We have, you know, we have a shortage of subs, but logistically, with the computerized system and having everything in one place, it does make my job a lot easier than it did last year. I'm able to build that into my day now, which, you know, I had to do and give myself a routine to build into my day to go to get into the system at least one or two times a day to see if anybody is, you know, taking time off throughout the week or had an emergency day that I'll need to cover, but it's right there. It's right in my system. I actually have it. I've downloaded the app on my phone, so I can actually sit there when I don't want to hear my kids and check my app and see if I'm going to have, you know, an issue for the next day. Just one example that I spoke about with Chris quite a bit, I had, you know, on last Thursday, we had, you know, abundance of illness. Kids are getting sick, teachers are getting sick, it's that time of year. In addition to that, I had some teachers that were going to be out for things that they already knew they were going to be out for. We didn't have coverage for everyone. We normally don't. I mean, we do have a shortage of subs, but I was able to cover the ones that I did know about on Monday, so that when I walked in on Thursday, the three new ones that I received, I was only working with them. It was a manageable amount of time for me because I only had three to cover. I didn't have seven to cover. So in that respect, it does work. We do have some teachers that, you know, that are substitutes that are our everyday subs, and we, they're very loyal to us, they work for us every day, and we're now asking them to take some positions that are extended time. So we're losing them as day-to-day subs because they're going to be going into some of our, at least in my building, some of my classrooms in an extended period. So it is something that we're constantly talking about, something constantly working about, but the system itself, the computerized system itself, makes it a lot easier for me. I get two updated reports, one at 6:00, one at 7:30. So while I'm getting myself together, getting myself out the door, I know exactly if I have to create time that morning to get coverage ready. So for myself, I actually am very impressed with the system. I like it a lot, and it's just, it's time management for me. I get in the building at 7:30, it gives me a whole half hour to create coverage as if I need to, whereas last year, you know, we weren't getting in until, at least in my building, about 8:00, 8:02, and students are already arriving. So I'm not able to greet students if I'm having to cover classes. So I'm able to get that done the night before or the day well before kids get there. So in that respect, I really do feel like the system is doing a great job for us.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And Josh, I know you have some updates on E-Rate and where the district is going in terms of technology. That's interesting because that came up with questions in stakeholders' report and budget plans for technology, so the timing is perfect.
So just going to give you the brief kind of rundown.
You can step up.
Oh.
Sure.
It's a terrible place to be. So just to give you the rundown of E-Rate as it stands for this school year. So in past years, we were at 80% reimbursement from USAC. Now we're down to 60%. Yeah, so that's a nice 20% drop for us. Hopefully, coming in the next year, we can work on getting some of those numbers back up so that we can get more money back for our technology. So this year, we were able to secure $25,365.60 for what we had put out. And we did PEPP, and this was prior to you, so what they had done was like a PEPP mini-bid. And so they did core switches and some access points. So we were able to get $20,430.60 for the core project and then $4,935 for access points if we were to need that.
Core project is what, for people like me?
Yeah, so I was actually getting to that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So my main focus right now is going to be on the core and the switches and all that. That's the main infrastructure. Right now, our core switch is about nine years old, and so your normal lifespan for those particular appliances are about five to seven years. So we're already past that time, and we do not have any kind of service agreement on that device at all. So if it were to fail tonight, we would have nothing tomorrow. And when I say nothing, I mean, like, there would be no internet, there would be no inter-network connectivity at all. We would not be able to use the computer systems in a network capability, if that makes sense. So we really kind of need to take a look at that as a kind of a dire situation as far as, I mean, we've been like, nothing has happened to the core, but I wouldn't want to be in a situation where something does happen to the core. Mainly because, you know, when it comes to emergency situations, obviously, we're going to be paying emergency rates, you know, getting service in here, maybe trying to find parts, you know, it's just kind of one of those up in the air types of things. So off of the E-Rate mini-bid-
Before you move on to the core, you used the word dire.
Yes.
Help me understand, define dire for me. I mean, is this something we need to get done next week? If we get it done sometime before the school year, sometime the next two or three years? How do you envision it?
So I would say, I say dire, and maybe it's maybe too harsh a word, but honestly, maybe not. We're at nine years, we're already past the, you know, the normal life expectancy, so not having any kind of warranty or any kind of backup on these devices, you know, if that fails, we're done. So to me, kind of dire.
So whenever you say switch, do you mean like a router? What's a switch?
So it's like the business big version of, yeah, your router home minus like, you know, the antennas and stuff.
Right.
Not a thing, just, you know, the switching of packets and everything.
Which results in no email, no internet, no nothing.
Correct.
Are our forms tied into this?
No, so the last time, I don't know when we were talking about up here, it's like I want money or something. But the last time up there, it was about the phone system, and yes, it wasn't under any kind of warranty or anything like that, and we fixed that issue. So yeah, like in that case, if that system went down, you pick up the phone and call and you get no one, that'd be the same thing. You click on Internet Explorer, more like Google Chrome, and you would get nowhere. Or even our interconnected network, so those, their personal drives, things like that, wouldn't have access to those anymore. They'd still be on our servers, but there would be no connectivity between us.
So all of our classrooms that use like Google Docs?
Nope, wouldn't be able to use that.
Yeah, Google Docs.
Correct.
So that's the last-
Yeah. Josh, I was going to, I don't know, from Mr. Russo's, but I think he was looking for a timeline of when you felt this needed to be-
What do we need to do? I guess is really what I'm asking.
Yes.
And when? Think we should do about that?
I would say, you know, we have, we have kind of the payment structure and stuff. I would say we really kind of want to act on this, you know, in a timely manner. You know, we haven't had any signs that, you know, it's going to fail anytime soon, but, you know, in the next month or so, you know, we have the E-Rate funding for it now, though it's only like really a quarter of what we need, and that comes down to just how the money was spent over the four years at E-Rate. A lot of it was offloaded in the beginning, not really a lot in the elementaries, but because this is core and because it services all buildings, you have to take money from all the buildings, but you can't just say, oh, well, the high school's going to use like 20% of it and everybody else is going to use the rest. Can't do that. So we only got, you know, $20,000 instead of, you know, the 60% of our, you know, really full expenditure, if that makes sense.
Well, Josh, just to clarify, because this is all new for the board, I thought when we had met and we had met with Chris, we talked about doing the system this year, the core system this year and renewing it, but using some of that money that we have from E-Rate to pay for it and then folding into next year's E-Rate's other payments to kind of-
Yes. So you, you had asked that question, I clarified with E-Rate. We cannot, so like, basically, it's all a one-time purchase type situation. So we purchase it, we get those E-Rate funds, and then you can't say, oh, well, if we want to use a little bit of this lease payment, because you, that's a work bank up. So we won't be able to do that. It'll only be like, we use the $20,000 that was allotted, we could wrap that into a lease, say a five-year lease, we have a couple lease options, but a five-year lease. We pay our, I think it's $17,816 every year. We may be able, just depending on our financial situation going forward, we may be able to do this in two years or three, where there's no penalty for us paying early or paying it off early.
Josh, next question, could we buy the core switch itself, the chassis, maybe this year, and then in subsequent years buy the cards for it or the transceiver or-
We could break it up like that, sure. You know, obviously, we just get whatever monies were for that, so we could potentially do that, yes.
But if we also, if we had, we had the objective of leasing it over a five-year span where this wasn't built into the budgets, we've had a little bit of turnover in the technology department and the way, as Josh said, E-Rate was being used. So therefore, maybe what we could do is, with no early payment penalty on this, you have the opportunity to pay the $17,816.50, where if we would defer the first year payment, we'd be looking at more at $20,000 for 87 over four years. So with that option is, maybe we can build that into the 2021 budget to pay off that core switch where maybe we were looking at a 64 to 65 payment. But the thing ultimately is, what can we do with the E-Rate? Because there are no guarantees next year, it could pop up, but the way I took it is it could be quite catastrophic if the core goes down. The analogy we were trying, Dr. DiPiero, Josh, and myself were trying to think analogies of our network. If the sun dies, it's the sun in our solar system, the core. So maybe given a port-
Josh, for the board, is it a fair description to say that it's a piece of hardware, if it dies, or stops? But we would normally go out and buy a new one, but it would take a week or two to configure it and install it and everything up and running.
Correct.
What we do, David, now is we have a service contract, and if it dies, they come in four hours and they bring it back up. So what we don't have now is that insurance policy. And we're technically in a physical album.
My sense was just, I got a car that's 10 years old, I know I need to replace it, but it's running fine right now, and I'm not worrying about it. But I do know at a point in the future, that's what I'm trying to glean, I'm hearing now sometime this school year, is that fair to say? You're looking to do it this school year?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's, that's-
Yeah, I'm sorry, David.
I appreciate this, it's what we need to do.
Yeah, yeah. And then just to give you kind of an outlook on E-Rate as we move forward, so E-Rate was given at a four-year term. This year is the last year of E-Rate as we know it. So category two most likely will continue, but we don't know in what form or what monies they're going to give or anything. We know nothing. The FCC is doing what government does and taking their time, so.
So you realize it would be going up, or you're saying you're not comfortable with that?
Yeah, I would not be comfortable in just waiting around to see what they're going to do.
Plus we do it now.
Exactly. Because, you know, we made up with less funding than we would have, and even if we ended up with funding in next year, there's all these projects, you know, at least in the technology department, that could be funded. So this is just one of those things. And I'll be sending Dr. DiPiero some more information on this so that you guys have that in front of you, but just to kind of give you a little higher overview of what this is.
What's your overall cost? And everyone brace yourself.
Yeah, the overall cost will be $80,779.22.
Is that before or after E-Rate?
That is with all the E-Rate-
After, that's our net.
Correct, correct.
Have we budgeted for that?
No, we did not budget for that, but we, if we did a five-year lease agreement, we would be able to pay that first payment. We believe that would be worked into the budget, that $17,816, if we did a five-year lease payment, we can do that $17,816.50 in the first year, and then we could determine if we were able to pay additional on it by the end of this year when we start to see where we end up with everything. And then also, we might be possibly able to budget into next year to pay it off, so we're not paying that additional interest each year.
But there was not a prepayment company that you said?
Yeah, we checked.
What's the interest rate of that?
We did not get the interest rate for what they gave us on here. They just gave us the amounts with the payments, but we would check on the interest rate before we did it. We were just trying to get general numbers and move forward on that.
As far as some options.
Yeah, because we wanted to try to get unique, how to pay this if it, just the way E-Rate has been done in the past. You know, we have people with very good intentions doing it, we had strong tech, but this is a big portion of this.
You might want to look, if you haven't already, at the top three or four manufacturers of core switches, and you might get some competitive bidding that maybe we can reduce that cost a little bit with other alternatives that are all taught here.
Right, we could do that. The only thing is we would then not be able to follow the E-Rate any longer.
So is the number one plan the only one E-Rate listed?
No, so it was already sent out to E-Rate, so the mini-bid happened already, so we're locked in with this, like, the person who bid for this stuffs now. Does that make sense?
Except do we have to go with that, though?
I mean, we could, we could go somewhere else, and then we just wouldn't get E-Rate reimbursement.
So you're saying it would have to be 20% less to be- Or in many cases, it is, like, there's-
I don't know.
The top four or five vendors, you get like one.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible. It is possible.
So did you say we put this out for bid?
Yeah, so it was PEPP. So it was-
Yeah, I'm sorry, Chris.
We didn't have to like RFP it, for instance, they call it a mini-bid, but it's done with PEPP pricing, so it's already, you know, we don't have to bid, you know, the thing, it's already the-
So PEPP is a state contractor, right?
It's a great state contractor.
But it's our particular vendor, so you're getting a great price for that piece, that model number from that one, but there are four or five vendors that make excellent product that we might-
And what's the other one we use, guys, from the state?
We use CoStar.
CoStar.
In other words, the state is bidding for this.
And this is, this product in itself is the same brand as all of our, the new equipment that we have just purchased with E-Rate. So it's not that I'm opposed to buying, you know, from different manufacturers, it's just when you start mixing things, I, sometimes a little bit difficult.
Yeah, I agree.
So that's just one of those factors, at least for me. But that says. We'll send that information to Dr. DiPiero as he said, you know, facilitate that to you guys, so. Any other questions, anything that I can back you on? Thanks. No? Okay, great.
Thank you. Moving on to the next section of our meeting, under Section 1 miscellaneous, I'll entertain a motion to approve the additions to the 2019-2020 conference and field trip requests. Have a motion for that?
Send them.
Move by the second.
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion?
I just have a question on, how are we, Chris, maybe you can answer this, on the utilization of the late, for the field trips, because I'm seeing some of these, say, buses for $221, but they're seven students. Are they scheduling with you, or how are we?
We haven't started sketching quite yet. Mr. Lockman has an opportunity to take it up for, I believe, a Special Olympic type event near Slippery Rock, so he will use it for this. We're working on some of the details on it right now. I'm working with our, you know, the teachers you do on everything, and we're kind of understanding, and I think it's a positive work towards things, through my explanation for that. But I think we'll get it up and running sooner than later.
Any other questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Under Section 2 Finance, there's two items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the August 2019 bill in the amount of And number two, ratify the agreement between the district and Climatex for the repair and preventive maintenance to the compressor unit at Carnegie Elementary School at a cost of $13,968.58. The cost of the repair was the lowest quoted of 10. Have a motion for that?
I shall move.
Move by the second.
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Under Section 3 Personnel, there are four items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the addition to the 2019-2020 athletic supplemental list. Number two, reassign Kimberly Wagner and Justin Lambert to positions of instructional aid at Carnegie Elementary School for the terms of the FCA Collective Bargaining Union Agreement. Number three, reassign Randy Kramer to the position of life skills support aid at Carnegie Elementary, consistent with the terms of the FCA Collective Bargaining Union Agreement. Number four, appoint Michelle Tate to the position of instructional aid at Carnegie Elementary, consistent with the terms of the FCA Collective Bargaining Union Agreement. Have a motion for those four items.
Send them.
Move by the second.
Second.
Move in second. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Under Section 4 Student Services, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed French trip to Canada for eligible French students, June 14th of 2020 through June 19th of 2020, as submitted by the French teacher Billy Glasser. Do I have a motion for that item?
Send them.
Move by the second.
Second.
Move in section, thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Under Section 5 Policy, we have two items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the first reading of the following policies for the full PSBA policy review. Policy number 911, news media relations. Policy number 912, relations with educational institutions. Policy number 913, non-school organizations, groups, individuals. Policy number 914, relations with intermediate students. Policy number 916, volunteers with attachment, the volunteer application. Policy number 917, parent family involvement. And item number two, the first reading of the revision to policy number 227, drug awareness as has been submitted. Have a motion for those two items.
Send them.
Move by the second.
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. All business, any director, any old business thing I would like to bring?
I just have a question. I'm curious where things stand with board docs. I'm doing training, the first of November, and then we have to set up just one hour of training. My training will be four hours, then the board training will be an hour, and he said preferably like on an evening, whenever maybe you have executive session in the building too, whatever. So I haven't set that up yet, I was waiting for my training and then to see what we could do from there.
Quick question, do you want to look at dates now, even ranges of dates? Like, should we try in November? Is the board, going to December, we only have a single meeting and-
Do you have any idea in November when you're getting your training?
Mine is the first, November 1st. So we look at-
At the second meeting?
Well, we have typically a finance review, which is followed by an executive session. Would that be the executive session to deal with since it's open-ended and it takes longer? It goes into-
Good point. That would be the first meeting in November.
Right. I think it's the 12th.
The first meeting. The second is the-
Correct.
So November 12th, possibly?
Is everyone tentatively okay with the 12th?
Okay, I'll confer that and then get back to everyone.
Thanks, Garcia. Thanks, Michelle. Any other old business questions or topics? Not new business, any director, any new business thing I would like to bring?
In our package, we have this loyalty transfer tax, finance item 1019-3, but I didn't see it on the agenda. Was that?
That was discussed last week at the executive session. Briefly, when we purchased the Glasser property, because it was not in our district and was not being used for school purposes, the state did not allow for, we tried to argue that if we were taking it in lieu of condemnation.
Yeah.
The state did not buy that. Exactly. So they, the full amount was over $7,000, $8,000. We negotiated with them, and they came down to $49 and change, and then the others were just fees, there would be no way to negotiate that. So we negotiated it down to the lowest possible price, so we're, you know, our recommendation is that we would pay it, otherwise it would be involved in a lengthy appeal to common court.
And it is on the bill's payable. We did have this as a separate item, but bill's recommendation was that we just move it to a cons payable and put it on this year and pay.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business items for board members? Nope? Open forum. Anyone in the audience have questions for the-
I have a question. I'm Mary Zakira.
Mary.
And Mr. Jones, when you made your presentation, excuse me for a minute, you mentioned that the funding went from 80% to 60%, and the name of where it was coming from, was it USAC? I don't know what that is.
Yeah, USAC, it's like universal, I can't actually remember what that stands for. It's part of the FCC's funding for schools and for actually libraries. But we get that money based off of like free and reduced lunch and the total number of students in the district.
And just, why did they reduce it so much?
So we see a reduction in free and reduced lunch and maybe a reduction in school students. I'm not really sure, it was before my time here that the reduction occurred, but that would really be the only two factors that could lead to that.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any other open forum questions or?
Can I follow that up? Do you know who our E-Rate consultant is, is it the IU?
It is not, it is a company called CSM, I believe.
CSM is, so with Crafton becoming Title I now, school-wide, is that going to impact the application for next year to increase it?
It could possibly, if, you know, that led to a higher rate of free and reduced lunch. But it's really based on free and reduced lunch, not title percent.
Thank you.
Any other open forum questions? Another open forum question.
I always have one. I have a couple, but the first one, just you commented on the feedback from the stakeholders meetings. Can you summarize maybe the participants, the general feedback that you got, how you're going to use that and, you know, what it's doing to inform your decision process? How's the search going?
Sure, the search is going well, I think we got great feedback. The board and the district, the administration appreciates all of the feedback that the community members provided. Teachers were very active and provided a lot of great feedback. Are you looking for something in?
Well, what's the general sentiment that you took away from the stake, I went to all of them, so I'm just curious as to what your interpretation of the stakeholders meetings was.
I think it's probably a 30-minute presentation to summarize it, but I think in general, people were very positive about what they were getting from the district, but had suggestions about, and we can see areas of improvement here or here. And I think our board took it very seriously, we're looking to connect our new superintendent with Frank Kirk, the one that led those sessions, and make sure that they communicate and share those ideas that were brought from the community to the new superintendent so they can internalize them and help make them part of their role.
Do you have a projection on when you think?
I was gonna say, I think it's fair to say that across the board, whether it was the communities, members, the administration, teachers, and the board itself, it was pretty similar to what everyone was kind of hoping for, for, you know, quality from next year in the district we have.
I think that is one thing that stood out. They were very common, because she did it thematically, qualitatively, like by what everyone's saying, categorizing them. But then when you look again at each group, there were very big ones that were all the same. Like, so that makes me feel good, because I feel like then you guys are communicating and we're hearing it, and the teachers and the administration have the same kind of sentiments and everything. So I think that's a good foundation as we are interviewing our candidates.
Do you have a projection of when you're in the corner?
I would say, probably, I think we had communicated that, hopefully by the first of the year, we would have somebody in place and started. It might be sooner than that, but is that a fair?
I think so, or before January 1st is our target.
Any other questions?
Anyway, it was brought up in, two more, just two more. It was brought up in prior meetings, that we have a grant writer, who is the grant writer for a property?
Well, we have a variety of people, all of our administrators are grant writers. That's interesting, because the board was just asking about that this evening. We've developed a system-wide form to make sure that, you know, grants sometimes can be a little bit more complex than they seem on the surface. One, do they match our curriculum? Two, is there matching funding? How long does that matching funding occur? We are encouraging all of our building administrators in our central office to seek out as many grants as they possibly can. And then also, our teachers have been doing a great job with grants. We've had several teachers in the area of science apply for and receive grants that have been very helpful in the classroom. But we do not have a designated grant writer who filter it through the entire staff. And then we put it to the board for approval.
Okay, that's, that's a lot different than what we'd heard in the prior meetings, so thank you.
What's that? If we communicated differently, it was an unintentional.
Sure.
We've had, we've had people that have spent a lot of time writing grants in the past, but there have been a dozen people that have written grants a lot of times.
And some people are in the district assigned to write grants, like federal grants, E-Electronic grants. So in that sense, we do have designated people for those kinds of things. But all I need to do is open my computer up in the morning, and there are dozens of grant opportunities. In fact, Dr. Kirk working with us this evening, she said, "Dr. Nupirio, check your computer out tomorrow morning because there'll be a grant coming from the University of Pittsburgh and you're gonna want it to disseminate to your staff." And we will do that and see what kind of takers that we get. But again, there are some things in terms of federal funding grants, E-grants, those kinds of things that people like Lisa Raleigh, people like Ed Mantich, take care of for it, and they have specific assignments. So it's a little bit of a combination, but we do encourage all of our staff members to look for additional bodies.
Also, it is hard to have one dedicated employee for only grant writing and justify a salary and benefits and everything. In my own school district where I work, we just let go our grant writer because there wasn't enough. And there was enough teachers, or even like me, and I was writing mental health grants, because that's my expertise area, so I knew how to pull things and put it together. And the ease with which you can apply and put grant applications together now, like just working in a team of two or four, like you can get it done. So it's a matter of looking out for it, getting emails, being connected in a network in your like area, and that helps. So it's a little bit of shift than what it was before. You have the university level, it's not dedicated one single person writing grants, it's like your team. So if you, if you have a selected project or you want to bring steam in, then the science teachers can get together and they hear some of the grants coming up.
Anyone else?
All right, last one for the night. So I get a lot of questions about the inter-governmental cooperation agreement. Can you expound on what it is and what it entails and what you're asking of Crafton?
We had announced it last week, we voted on it, we passed it. We thanked the borough for their cooperation and their help with us for the last, probably a year, year plus of that. I think we felt like we took that step and now there are other steps that have to happen. And I think some of those balls are now in the borough's court, but. And thank you, the cooperation agreement is between the Collingwood School District and Crafton Borough, if that wasn't clear. But I think we, we've taken the steps that we can take at this point and we're waiting for other things to happen and the process to evolve, and there are other steps that have to occur. And we're excited, we're continuing to appreciate the cooperation and participation of the borough. So we're excited that we might have something good to share collectively in the coming days, weeks, months.
All right. In regards to what?
The motion we passed last week, and it's recommended that we keep our comments limited because we don't have all the information yet. But there, in the document last week, was a reference to a property in Crafton that's next to the Giant Eagle, that the borough and the district are cooperating on, how to best utilize that property. Any other questions? If not, we'll turn back to the board. Board, any open forum items or questions? Can we move on to Maurice's favorite moment? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Move in second, thank you, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?